Okay, but do you want us to start anyway?
Yeah, because we got some ground rules to lay out.
This meeting is being recorded.
Twice. Okay, this meeting is hereby called to order. And let us begin with a roll call.
Judy Abdo?
Here.
Barbara Ferrer? Astrid Hager?
Here.
Yvette Martinez?
Here.
Frank Romals? Ramalas Taylor?
Here.
Keisha Woods? Robert Byrd? Carla Plitez Howell? Jaclyn Murkowski? Deanne Tilton?
Here.
And Sheila Q?
Here.
Coram is present.
All right, thank you very much. We had a closed session, so to begin with, counsel, will you report us out of closed session?
Thank you, Chair. There was no reportable action from the board's closed session.
All right, and Linda, were there any requests for public comment on closed session specifically?
There were no requests for public comments on the closed session.
Okay, then would you read the ground rules for the meeting? And perhaps someone will call in and say, I didn't know how to do that. But so we'll ask again, but why don't you read the ground rules?
I will do. Thank you so much. Good afternoon, members of the board and public. I'm Linda Vo with First 5 LA. And before we do begin today's meeting, I will be going over some important updated information. Under AB 361, members of the First 5 LA Board of Commissioners or staff may continue to participate in this meeting via teleconference during declared emergencies through January 1, 2024. And in the interest of maintaining appropriate social distancing, members of the public may observe this meeting telephonically or otherwise electronically as posted on our website and this agenda. And regarding public comments, there are two ways to submit public comment. And the first way is written public comments via email to LVO@first5la.org by 1:30 PM the day of the meeting in order for them to be read aloud during the meeting. And as a reminder, public comments emailed should indicate the item number the comment corresponds with. And any public comments received after 1:30 PM will become a part of our public records. Now, during the meeting, the second approach is public members can use the Q and A chat function to express an interest in speaking to an item. And it is important that these requests to speak be submitted via the Q and A chat box function before the item being commented on is presented. And when submitting requests to speak, public members are asked to only provide his or her name and the item number the comment corresponds with. And all public comments received during the meeting via the Q and A chat box will be addressed in the order they are received. When the public member does hear their name being called to provide public comments, they will be given the ability to speak during the meeting. And if we don't hear the public member begin to speak after being called out twice, we will move on to the next public comment. Each public comment will be allotted two minutes before we move on to the next one. And before we begin this meeting, please do note the following. To minimize backrhythmic disruptions, all board members and staff should place their lines on mute until called upon to speak. And to minimize multiple people speaking at the same time and to ensure for a coherent dialogue, board members can use the hand raise or chat box function to express an interest in speaking, or you can also text the supervisor. To express an interest in speaking, I will then coordinate with Supervisor Q, and your name will be called in the order received. And with the exception of adjournment, which would be called for by the chair, a formal roll call will be done for all action items. And a reminder to all board members to take yourselves off mute prior to roll call. And if technical assistance is required during the meeting, do contact me at 213-276-9389, and I will connect you with IT. And with that, I will now hand this meeting back to our Honorable Chair.
Thank you very much. And now that everyone has the instructions for public comment, do you see any public comment requests specifically on the closed session item? Because we will ask as we go along for any of the other items.
I do not see any current request for public comment on the closed session.
All right, then let us move to the consent agenda. There are five items on the consent agenda. Let me ask if any commissioners wish to remove any items from consent for discussion and a separate vote? Just speak up if you do. All right, then I believe the consent agenda is open then to public comment if there are any specifically on the consent agenda.
There are no public comments on this consent agenda.
All right, then may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I see Astrid's hand and Carol's hand up.
All right, moved by Astrid, seconded by Carol. Let us take a roll call on the consent agenda.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Carol Segala?
Yes.
Ramalas Taylor?
Yes.
And Sheila Q?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda are remarks by myself. And my suggested to me by my wonderful staffer, Lisa Pinto, and also, I think, kind of on the top of a lot of our minds, I want to talk a little bit about mental health. Originally, we're looking at the issue of mental health in the context of the pandemic. But I've also been thinking about it as many parent friends and also, I think, on the various news outlets have been asking about how they can talk to their children about what's going on in Ukraine. So first, in terms of our first five children, the CDC has indicated a number of ways that the pandemic has affected our young kids' birth to five years, both directly and indirectly. Even if they do not contract the virus or issues related to the virus, we heard a lot of reports about how many young children, very young children, social and emotional or mental health well-being has been impacted by all of the issues. It's not just the infection itself, but all the issues related to the pandemic. And as we know, trauma faced at this very young age can have really long-term consequences. The CDC laid out a number of specific challenges that this very young age group faces, changes in their routine, which are very important to them, break in their continuity of care or learning, break in their continuity of healthcare, you know, significant life events that do not get celebrated, and therefore, it doesn't seem like they even happen, birthdays. You know, and that's not just about young kids. I feel the same way about my birthday way at the other end, you know. The children also significantly experience a loss of security and safety, the anxiety of their parents and caretakers. So I want to praise First 5 LA for its support of the community and innovative thinking over the whole past two years, dealing with the pandemic, including watching out on issues of mental health. But I want us also to give some thought to whether there's even more we might do to talk with and work with our partners, because these issues will persist. In fact, almost at the end of last year, the U.S. Surgeon General issued an advisory called "Youth Mental Health Crisis Further Exposed by COVID-19 Pandemic." And I think here the word "further" is a very interesting one. Because he said it would be a tragedy if we beat back one public health crisis only to allow another to grow in its place. And outlined the pandemic's impacts on mental health of America's youth and families, but also mental health challenges that existed for them before the pandemic, calling for a swift and coordinated response, recommendations for what, you know, families and organizations and even technology companies and others can do to improve mental health of children, adolescents, and young adults. The Surgeon General said mental health challenges in these populations are widespread. Feelings of helplessness, depression, thoughts of suicide. The rates have all increased over the past decade, even before the pandemic. But the pandemic further altered experiences at home, in school, even now being back, and in the community. And the future well-being, says the Surgeon General, of the country depends on how we support and invest in this next generation. And that goes, I think, to the deep work we're undertaking with the SEED Collaborative. Because beyond the general sort of affect, the negative impacts most heavily affected those who were vulnerable already to begin with. Young people with disabilities, racial and ethnic minorities, LGBTQ plus youth, low-income youth, youth in rural areas and immigrant households, youth already involved with the child welfare or juvenile justice system. So we know that equity will play and has played a big role in this crisis, and it's a puzzle piece that we take into account. So there are a series of recommendations, just recognizing mental health as an essential part of overall health. Trying to guarantee every child access to culturally competent, affordable mental health care. Supporting the awareness about mental health in every setting. And routinely screening, which is not always done. And it's a lot to talk about, but I was thinking last night, late night, watching the news as always and trying not to, the impact that this aggression by Russia on Ukraine has also had on young kids. It's like their parents can't stay away from the news, and so they're watching families get separated from each other, young children crying, parents holding them and then giving them up. I mean, it's extremely disturbing. And finding ways to talk about that with our kids has always, always been hard. To explain war, why anyone would do that, and the impact, and assure them that a lot of people are, you know, working to try to help these children. So simply reflecting on this very important aspect and how in the middle of one cross-current of history, we swim against another, and yet they all have such serious impacts on our kids. So with that, just to raise the issue and add it to the general discussion, I think that's really all I need to say today. Let me turn to you, Kim, for your remarks. But first, let me ask if there are any public comments on my remarks.
There are no public comments on your remarks.
All right, thank you very much. Over to you, Kim.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you for your comments. You know, one of the things we have reflected on over the course of the past two years is, you know, how we at an employee level, how we at a human level and a societal level take care of ourselves and one another and the community broadly during a time of such instability and fluidity and turmoil. And you spoke very directly to it from a child's perspective. And we've worked hard to try to also support the adults in their professional context and in their familial context. And, you know, one of the things we've emphasized at First 5 LA in an environment of instability and uncertainty, to see and seize what you can control, you know, what you can exercise some agency over. And in that respect, I've tried to make the connection between the work that we do, both in terms of the contributions we make to children and communities and families, as well as the agency we have in our work. That at a time where so much seems outside of our control, how fortunate and privileged are we to do the work that we do? And to do work that has meaning and bearing on real lives and real communities. I've shared with the board how proud I have been of the team in terms of how individually and collectively members of First 5 LA have stood up and shown up. And how we together have tried to navigate the uncertainty and instability across multiple domains over the course of the past two years. Ukraine being, the invasion of Ukraine being the latest global example of that dynamic. And, you know, I'm really proud of how the team has come together in a virtual context and near-virtual context and really focused on what we can control. And I've shared with the board how we have endeavored to really lift up the importance of us focusing on bringing more clarity to the priorities in our work, our strategic priorities, the importance of aligning and integrating within First 5 LA's activities, as well as the work we do with and alongside so many others. And to center DEI, both from an internal practice and policy and cultural perspective, as well as in our grant-making and work beyond First 5 LA. We believe that those aspects of our implementation of the strategic plan in terms of focus, alignment, and DEI are just fundamental to who we are and our effectiveness as a systems leader and funder. We've endeavored over the course of the past couple of meetings to share with the board some examples of how we are making progress in our efforts to better integrate in the line, as well as to center our work in DEI. And really appreciated how active and engaged the board was last month in our conversation with SEED and John Powell around targeted universalism. Today, we want to build upon that. And again, it's in the spirit of, you know, what do we know? What we can control, things we can be doing now to help support a meaningful and successful future for our organization, and most importantly, for children and families. And so we're going to particularly focus the bulk of the board's time on our fiscal realities. So Antoinette, our Chief Transformation Officer, is going to kick things off to provide some context, big picture, organization-wide, in terms of what we're keeping an eye on, what we see as the must-dos, or what we sometimes refer to within First 5 LA as our imperatives. But what we're really needing to focus on that grounds our work and efforts to be high-impact, high-performing, and DEI-focused. We're then going to hear from Raul, our Finance Director, who's going to go deeply into one of those fundamental must-dos, which relates to our fiscal realities, our fiscal imperatives. You know, the good news is we are a fiscally strong organization. We are blessed with strong and capable colleagues and individuals, our human assets, as well as our financial assets associated with our revenues. But we know they're declining. And so as we think about, we can't just think about today. We also need to think about and plan for the future. And, you know, as Raul will speak to, you know, our annual expenditures, even though they're going down and are within the board-approved long-term financial plan caps, our expenditures do continue to consistently exceed our revenues. And we all know that's just not sustainable over time, and we all recognize that as stewards of public funds, we got to plan for the future. And so today's kind of a context setting, because the good news is we have time. We have the time and the opportunity to plan, to explore options, and to make some really important strategic choices about what we will do as well as what we won't do, or we might do differently, as well as the role or roles we will play. So you'll hear some examples about some short-term things we are doing now with an eye towards their longer-term impacts. And that's modeling the kind of long-term orientation, multi-year orientation that both staff and board need to bring to this. And more broadly, as I've shared with the board as a part of my goals for this year, we need to update our long-term financial plan. And that's something we intend to bring back to the board. And it will be a plan that aligns our revenues and expenditures while maintaining a responsible reserve. So more to come on that. We'll be working closely with the Budget and Finance Committee, to be sure. But really just want as a tee-up to the time we have with Antoinette and Raul, just underscoring how aligning our expenditures to revenues, aligning our strategic activities to our fiscal realities are absolutely fundamental to our ability to focus and prioritize and maximize our impact, not just for the year ahead, but really for generations to come. And we're eager to have this dialogue with the board, get your feedback, and continue the dialogue over the course of the year. So with that, I will turn it back to the Chair unless there are any public comments.
Confirming there are no.
I'm sorry, say again.
Confirming there are no public comments on the Executive Director's comments.
All right, and because we will be discussing the fiscal item later, I think I'll hold any questions that my commissioners might have for the, after the presentation.
Great.
So given that there's no public comments on the Executive Director's report, let's move then to the Executive Director's contract amendment.
And Sheila, I'm going to step out, given that this is about me.
Okay, well, I guess it's hard for me to know if you've stepped out. I'll just take your word for it. And there she is, gone. All right, counsel, would you care to present this for us?
Yes, Chair, thank you. So as detailed in the staff report before the commission for approval is a proposed second amendment of the employment contract for the executive director. The proposed amendment would adjust the executive director's salary by 5% effective February 1, 2022, for a proposed annual salary of $339,227... Sorry, $339,227.62. The executive committee has reviewed the proposed amendment and recommends approval. Staff recommends that the board approve the proposed second amendment of the employment contract for the executive director and authorize the Chair to execute the amendment on behalf of the board. And that concludes my remarks, Chair.
Thank you, counsel. Judy, would you let me know if any of the commissioners have raised their hand to ask a question? If anyone has a question, please either use the hand raised sign or just raise your actual hand.
Ramalas has his hand up.
Okay, Ramalas.
I didn't raise my hand for a question. I just, I'm ready to make a motion whenever it's time to go.
All right, if yours was the only hand up, then a motion is appropriate to approve this action. So I've moved by Ramalas. Do I have a second?
Second by Judy.
Thank you. Please call the roll on this item.
Judy Abdo?
Yes.
Astrid Hager?
Yes.
Yvette Martinez?
Yes.
Carol Segala? Ramalas Taylor?
Yes.
Sheila Q?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to probably the most exciting thing on the agenda, which is the authorization of the disposition of records. Which may not sound exciting, but I just know that Dana, in making her very first presentation to this board, is excited about it. And Dana Schecter, our Enterprise Management Contract Specialist, Information Technology Team, has a presentation, and will be presenting with our counsel, Sarita Young. So over to you, Dana.
Great, thank you very much. Let me just share my presentation. And then Sarita will be starting us off.
I'll wait for it to load up, Dana.
Can you see it? And... There we go.
Right. So thank you again, Chair and members of the board. Chair, I do understand from Craig that every year this item is a highlight for board members' participation in First 5 LA. So we'll get right into it. First 5 LA, as a public agency, is required under the provisions of the government code to have a records management and disposition system for disposal of agency records. In 2018, you may recall that the board adopted a very extensive update to the record schedule, which is attached to your staff report. Every year, a best practice, best business practice and risk management practice is to go through a process of identifying obsolete records and moving them toward disposition if approved through a process. And so this step in the disposition process is a very important transparency step, because it gives the public reassurance that these documents have been reviewed extensively by staff, legal counsel, and the executive director, and then reviewed by the board before the records are destroyed. You have before you several spreadsheets of files. There are attachments D through J to your staff report that have been determined to be obsolete, eligible to be disposed of under the records retention policy. Dana and other staff members did the really hard work of gathering all of these files and determining whether they complied with the records retention schedule. I have reviewed the spreadsheets and determined that the files are eligible for disposition and have approved the disposition as required by state law. And Kim has also approved that disposition as well as required by law. And so before the board for review today is an information item only. We will have the approval of the disposition before you at the next meeting on consent calendar. And I will turn the presentation over to Dana so that she can provide you with some additional information.
Thank you very much. And I know nothing makes records management more exciting than some statistics. So I have those here for you today. I just wanted to kind of give you all an overview of the progress we've been making since I began our records retention last fiscal year. And last year was the first year that digital records housed in our enterprise content management system were included in review. And here you can see our contract administration and purchasing records. These are the annual disposition totals. So you can see last year, we had 21,625 digital records that were disposed of. And this year, it's down to a little over 11,000. So you can see, we got rid of that backlog that was in our content management system. And physical records stayed about the same. We did 416 last year and 304 this year. And here's our numbers for the finance disposition totals. Last year, we got rid of just over 45,000 digital records. And that was a huge backlog. And you can see this year, we only had a little over 10,000. So we're hoping this number just keeps going down a little bit and then becomes more consistent over time. But finance is very happy that they will never have to review 45,000 records again. And again, physical records did go down this year from 550 to 284. Our human resources, last year, we only looked at the digital records, and they went down from 1550 to 488. The reason why we didn't go through physical records last year was I had not completed the physical inventory from off-site storage that involved me going through 665 boxes personally, so I could actually see what was in them all and add them into our spreadsheet where I keep track of all the records. So this year, we included those, and there's just under 300 physical records. One of the main reasons why there aren't so many records in HR as there are in contracts and finance is the majority of HR records are personnel, and the retention is basically 10 years from the end of employment at First 5 LA. So so many people love working here that there's hardly... So, so many people love working here that there's hardly anyone leaving. And so we have to keep their records for years and years until they finally do separate. This is just a total look at all of the records that were been disposed since the 2016-17 fiscal year. Back then, for those two fiscal years, 16 through 18, we only looked at physical. And so there's a small amount there. And that's why there's such a huge jump last year to 68,000 digital records total. This year, down to 21,600. So we're making a lot of progress and we're gonna keep on doing it. And I just wanted to thank you all for your help and your review and with this matter. And hopefully, it's not too boring for you.
I think it's fascinating. As a matter of fact, when I moved out of my office at the end of the year, I wanted to ask you all to come by and help me figure out what to put in boxes and what to take out of them. Is that okay?
Sure.
Just kidding.
I am happy to help.
All right, I may call on you.
Okay.
Do you see any hands raised by any Commissioners? Any questions?
No hands up.
All right, hearing none and seeing none, I guess. Is there any public comment on this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right, this item was for information only and we'll come back for the Board's approval, I believe, at our next Commission meeting. So let us then move to the next item, which relates to updating our plans for transitioning toward hybrid work, given the impact of the pandemic on our work and also a report, I believe, on our capital project. So I believe I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Barth, to begin. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you so much. And hello, everyone, from First 5 LA's building. That's where I am today. It's appropriate that I'm sharing this presentation from our offices. And also appropriate because next week will mark two years since we transitioned to being a mandatory remote work organization. So as the agenda shows, these are the things that we're going to be covering today briefly in our discussion. We want to talk a little bit about the efforts that we've been making over the past year to adapt to the pandemic and prepare for the future, to share our current plans for how we're transitioning away from mandatory remote work, impacts of the recent state and county decisions on First 5 LA's operations. I'm sure you all have been tracking Governors' executive order changes and county changes. And then, as the Chair mentioned, updates on our capital improvement project. Anytime we talk about work that's not mandatorily remote, we need to talk about our building. And so our interim Chief Operating Officer and IT Director Jasmine Frost will talk a little bit about the updates on our Phase 1 of the Capital Improvement Project. Excuse me. So where have we been the last year at First 5 LA? Well, as I mentioned, we've been continuing to work remotely because our driving principle has to been to protect health staff, the health and safety of staff. But because, you know, about a year ago is when vaccines were made widely available to all adults and we started to see the, the potential for us to change the course of the trajectory of the pandemic, we started to engage the organization through a lot of different methods, surveys and team meetings and office hours to inform plans for the future. How will we as an organization evolve along with the evolution of the pandemic? And so about six months ago in the fall, we launched a hybrid work transition team to develop plans for how we might transition to our work. So while I'm presenting today, I want to give a lot of thanks to the colleagues who've been working with me on this over the past six months, from our IT team, from Human Resources, Finance, from our Office of Equity Strategy and Learning, our Office of Communications, our facilities folks. It's been a team effort. And of course, over the past year, we've been implementing Phase 1 of the Capital Improvement Project to make some critical building upgrades. So over the last six months, as we've been thinking about transitioning away from mandatory remote work, we've been guided by these principles. As you can see, they're really grounded in our values, focused on collaboration, focused on learning, really focused on the work. How can we make sure that we are doing the work in the best place possible and the best manner possible to advance our strategic plan? And of course, again, the safety has been first. The, you've heard Kim Belchay say that the health and safety of employees has always been our top priority of the past two years. So what have we learned? We've learned there's no one-size-fits-all approach to the future of First 5 LA's work. We have a diverse set of employees. We have diverse work. The work needs of our colleagues who work in communities may look different than the work needs of our information technology team. We've also learned that for every employee who wants to work remotely, there is an employee who wants to work in our building. And there are a bunch of employees who are kind of in the middle. So one-size-fits-all approaches as we transition is not going to make a lot of sense. We have been able to adopt new ways of doing work and adapt to working remotely. For those of you who were serving on the Commission before the pandemic, you may recall that First 5 LA was very much an in-person organization. We were paper-based. Everything had to be in person. Every time we wanted to approve something, it required wet signatures. And so we've been able to prove that we can do most of our work remotely and in some cases, do some of our work better. But we also know that just because we can do our work remotely doesn't mean that our work should always be remote. And some of our work will eventually benefit from in-person connection. So where are we headed? Kim Belchay has shared with the Board and with the organization that long-term, we will be a hybrid work organization. We won't be all remote. We won't be all in person. We'll be something in between, really grounded in the needs of the work and in the needs of our colleagues. And to get there, though, we're gonna have to try this on a little bit. We're still in the middle of a pandemic, let's remember. So we're gonna be launching what we are calling a transitional phase next month. On April 18th, our building will be open again for daily operations. Employees will be able to attend meetings and events in person, but employees will also still be able to work remotely. We want to be able to transition away from mandatory remote work, allow those employees who want to work for the building occasionally to come in and to make sure that those who want to try some more community in-person meetings can do that as well. And we want to do it safely. But we also know we have a lot of employees, for example, that have young children under the age of five who aren't eligible to be vaccinated. Or they may have a lot of pressing personal issues at home where the idea of coming back to the office is still a little bit uncertain for them. And so we don't want to be in the business of requiring folks, as we're still confronting a pandemic, to be, to do work in a way that's arbitrary. We want to allow people the chance to make some choices. And throughout this transition phase, we're going to continue to assess the evolution of the pandemic and always prioritize health and safety. So we'll be paying attention to that as we move forward. And we'll be capturing a lot of learning about what it means for us to be a hybrid work organization moving forward. Now, what does this mean for the Board? We have local emergency orders in place in LA County that allow us to continue to convene the Board virtually. And we are planning to do that for the foreseeable future. So we are planning to continue to convene the Board meetings and committee meetings virtually for this foreseeable future. And just a quick note on this, because some of you may have said, well, you know, I'm part of this State Board and we're starting to have to meet in person. What is this? I'm a little confused by this. First 5 LA is governed by the Brown Act and Assembly Bill 361, which is allowing public agencies to waive requirements of their governing public meeting acts as long as there's an emergency order in place, has said that the Brown Act can be, have certain requirements waived until January of 2024 as long as there's a local emergency order in place. So if LA County continues to have an emergency order in place, whether it's for the pandemic or some other issue, we can continue to convene the Board virtually until January of 2024. Bagley Keane, which is the act that governs state agencies, didn't have that flexibility. Their flexibility ended in AB 361, January of this year, which is why the Governors' executive orders and actions have been necessary to allow state agencies to continue to convene virtually. So what this means for us, we, we know we have a local emergency order. We're going to continue to convene our Board virtually for the foreseeable future, but we're going to track state and local policy just to make sure that we're compliant. We don't want to inadvertently plan for something and then have a change happen and not be prepared. We also know that maybe we don't want to wait until January 2024 to do a hybrid work meeting or meet in person. So earlier this week in the Executive Committee meeting, we forecasted that we want to have this conversation with the Executive Committee so we can determine if at some point before then, we may want to try a hybrid meeting approach, or we may want to try to convene a Board meeting again in person. And as we think about our annual Board survey that will come up in the coming months, we'll seek all of your thoughts and perspectives as well. If there are any changes that require us to change how we convene our meetings in the coming months, we will offer as much notice to Commissioners as possible. So we don't know, we don't control all those things, but we'll be paying attention and we will commit to offering as much communication as we can in advance to help support you all with your plans. So with that, one of the critical things that would allow us to have a Board meeting again in person is having a building that's safe for us to be in. So I'm going to hand it over to our interim Chief Operating Officer Jasmine Frost to share some updates about where we are with the first phase of our capital improvement project. Jasmine?
Thank you, Peter. Good afternoon, Commissioners. And just like Peter, I too am in the building presenting. And I can already see all the technology needs that I would need coming into the building. But today, I'm going to provide you with a quick overview and update on our building remodel project, also known as our CIP project. So in our May 2021 CIP presentation to the Board, we reported that the, due to the pandemic, the leadership team decided it was more prudent to take a phased approach to the CIP implementation. Phase 1 was focused on the foundational and reentry needs. This addressed improvements to our building environmentals, technology infrastructure, modernizing the AV systems in the NPR, improvements to structural components such as the roofing and solar panels, and improved the safety conditions of our workspace by enhancing our filtration system and plastic partitions in the workspaces. Anticipated completion of this phase is next month, which is April 2022. Phase 2 will focus on transforming the interior of the building. And this will address improvements to the offices, workspaces, conference rooms, et cetera. This will be brought to the Board for approval at a later time. Until then, we will be learning from the transition phase and the initial hybrid work efforts mentioned by Peter earlier in his presentation. And looking at the CIP timeline, as you can see, we have completed the pre-design and procurement work in October. The bulk of the construction work was completed in February with the last couple of remaining items slated to be completed in the coming weeks. These items include the roofing replacement, solar panel installations, and site work associated with the new generator enclosure. Unfortunately, delays related to equipment availability continue to be a challenge, but we hope that the substantial and the final completion of this construction phase is done by the end of April. So we're almost there. And this has truly been a well orchestrated team effort, coordinating with our external partners, Duberry, Mars, IMAG, and Morlin, who is our property manager, as well as our internal team members, all working together in perfect harmony to get this project completed in time for our colleagues to begin the reentry into the building. I also want to take this opportunity to thank everyone on the Board, as well as Kim and John for your leadership and support. And last but not the least, I'm really proud of my wonderful CIP team. Without their dedication and hard work, this would not have come together so smoothly. And this ends my presentation. And we're open to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much to Peter and to Jasmine. Judy, do you see anyone's hands up to, for question or comment on the Commission?
I do not see anybody's hands up.
Okay, well, let me ask a question. Perhaps others will think of something, but I don't recall in your presentation if there was any discussion about whether, or whether there had been any discussion about the use of hybrid work after the pandemic is over, after there are no longer declarations of, you know, emergency or urgency, et cetera. Or whether the focus has simply been on returning while we are still in the midst of dealing with the pandemic at one level or another.
Thanks for the question. So we are committed to being a hybrid work organization long-term, whether we can truly say it's post-pandemic or just in the future state when the pandemic is more endemic, whatever that might be. But we also realize that what that looks like in practice for employees should not be arbitrary. So we're trying really hard to make sure that we don't create arbitrary rules or requirements, like you must come into the building two to three days a week. We've been paying a lot of attention to other employers as they've been doing this and some employers have done that. Some employers have said, all right, we need all employees. And I'm not making this one up. An actual employer said, if your last name starts, you know, A through F, you come in on Tuesdays. And we just realized that our work at First 5 LA is so diverse. You know, our Communities team is going to have different work needs than our Government Affairs team than our Finance team, that we really want to ground it in the work. So as we launch what we're calling our transition phase toward hybrid work, which we haven't set an end date yet, we'll launch next month. We've committed no sooner than the end of the fiscal year. We want to give our employees some stability and consistency that we're going to try this on and learn what worked best, what work benefits from in-person connection, and what work can just continue to be done remotely. We don't want to be in the place of requiring employees who have, you know, diverse personal needs to be forced to make sacrifices that require them to be in the building if that work could have been done in a different location. So so the short answer is we are committed to hybrid work long-term. When that starts in a more post-pandemic or endemic world, will be up to a lot of other factors, some outside of our control and some decisions we might make on our own. And I'll ask Kim, if you want to, as our Executive Director, to share any of your thoughts or insights.
I think you captured it well, Peter. I, I think hybrid work, and I communicated this to the team quite a while ago, hybrid work is the future for First 5 LA. But as Peter noted, exactly what that's going to look like, we can't say. But we're going to use this transitional period to inform our thinking and learning and iterate as we go. So I'm, I'm a lot of confidence in our ability to, to work through this thoughtfully and to also be nimble and adaptive to what, what we learn along the way. And that includes the Board. You know, we'll have to work within the requirements of open meeting laws as they evolve. But, you know, I'm hopeful we will find ways to incorporate hybrid approaches into our Board meetings as well as how we do our work at a staff level.
All right, thank you, Ramalas.
Okay. My question is about the CIP. I'm not sure that I heard whether or not we've addressed the issue of this COVID issue for the facility, for the staff, for the Board, in the redesign of the building. Did that, because the CIP was designed originally before that happened and now it's happened? So my question is, have you take that into consideration? Have we put the changes? We need to, to protect the staff, the community, and the Board when we go back to in-site activities?
So yes, thank you for that. We do, we have plastic partitions put in place over the cubicles. We have touch-free or touchless faucets and fixtures. We have enhanced our filtration system in our HVAC as well. And, you know, we, we do deep cleaning every so often. So all those put together, I can send you a list if you'd like with all the, the safety measures that have been taken.
That would be great. I'd like to see that. But I'd also like to make sure that in the entry way, that whatever changes you guys thought needed to be made have been made or are going to be made.
Yes, yes, we will be working on those as well. We have, we're thinking about putting a visitor management system as well that also visitor management system as well that also tracks, you know, who comes into the building and also have have put into place a way to capture any health information that can be provided.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Judy, does anyone else have their hand up?
Kim has her hand up.
Yeah, Sheila, I just wanted to build, if I may, quickly on on what Jasmine was just saying. And because I'm, I think it's really important to manage our individual and collective expectations around the changes to the building. And as, as we've shared over this CIP journey, phase one is really about kind of the behind the walls and on the roof. And a lot of it is, we're not moving any, any walls. So there's not a lot of internal changes that are going to be immediately obvious to our individual and collective eyes. And that's true with COVID as well. As Jasmine said, there definitely are things such as the higher partitions that will be evident on the second floor and the touchless doors, faucets, et cetera. But probably the most important aspects of COVID-related actions are more around our policies and practices and behaviors. So when you walk into the building, it's probably not going to look an awful lot different from how it looks now. But what we are going to be asking staff members, board members, visitors to do will look different because we'll have a number of protocols and practices that we're putting into place. So the building changes are important, but from a COVID health protection perspective, it's more how we all behave. And I really want to commend our HR team and our facilities team working with the team Peter mentioned as part of the team Peter mentioned and really thinking very carefully about those policies and practices and developing a soon-to-be-released guide to all the staff and training to that guide and special support for managers. And you know, that's, that's as much as anything, how we're going to do the kind of job I'm confident we will do, which is a good job in protecting the health and wellbeing of us as an organization.
Okay. The county is also thinking a lot about public access. Although our, our various facilities have, you know, a great deal more traffic. And as the county requirements lessen kind of how we will do that. I believe that the Board of Supervisors is going to return to meeting in person the first Tuesday in April, but we will not be having people attend in the boardroom because we were not comfortable with having, you know, even half the number of people, which would be 300 in the boardroom if we couldn't require masking. And since we're not requiring masking inside generally, you can't put a special requirement on someone to go to a public meeting. So while we continue to renew, as we have here, our ability to meet remotely, that would also include access for remote testimony on every item and public comment, which satisfies the law. So I think we're all going to be learning as we go along and would recommend there's probably a, a good deal of discussion going on at Richards Watson for all of the public entities. And the county is happy to participate in any discussions about what we think will be required as we go along. So thank you so much for this presentation. I think we're all kind of finding our way. And also I think the opportunities for remote work, which have become mandatory for a while, did give us the opportunity to reconsider things we've been talking about that relate to not burning as much gasoline and therefore global warming issues and, you know, a lot of things that are related, but we hadn't really taken action yet about. So any other comments about this item?
Nobody's hand is up.
Thank you so much. Is there any public comment about this item?
There are no public comments on this item.
All right. Well, as we normally do about this time in our meeting, we're going to take a 10-minute break to let the people who are typing in the what's going on the old fashioned way to rest their fingers and get some water and we'll return at 2:35. See you then. Okay, let us reconvene. Let me know when you think everybody's kind of back and on again. Kim or Judy?
I see a lot of faces.
Yep, yep.
Well, that's a good thing because here we are about to begin our long discussion about fiscal reality. Two words you hardly ever hear in the same sentence. So this is an information item, but a very important one. We've been talking a while about it and we want to continue to move this discussion forward. So I, who will begin the presentation, Antoinette or Raul?
Yes, I will begin the presentation. Okay, can everyone see my screen? I've been known to have multiple screens and not know which one is actually moving. Okay, so good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Antoinette Andrews-Bush and the Chief Transformation Officer at First Five L.A. And I'm joined by my colleague Raul Ortega, who is the Director of Finance. So today's objectives are to remind the board of First Five L.A.'s fiscal reality and long-term financial plan. We're going to talk about this in the context of our evolution towards systems change. We want to develop shared understanding of the implications of the LTFB and orient the board to upcoming conversations about our budget for the next fiscal year. Now, we are eager to get into the meat of today's conversation, but before we do, I'd like to share some framing that helps place our fiscal reality and long-term financial plan within the context of our evolving work role and efforts to continuously improve. Now, just as the caterpillar goes through a metamorphosis process to become a beautiful butterfly, so too has First Five L.A. begun its process of its own transformation. In 2015, we began to transition our role from being primarily a funder of direct services to an agent of systems level change. We made this shift based on what we learned and what we're continuing to learn about the best role that First Five L.A. can play in the early childhood ecosystem and how we can extend our reach and maximize impact in the context of declining tobacco tax revenue. Now, as the board knows, we've started to bring in additional resources, but at 93% of our total revenue, tobacco taxes remain our most significant and reliable source. The board has been supportive of the shift to systems change, commenting that it is the most strategic thing that First Five L.A. can do, even if we didn't have declining revenue. And so when the board approved the 2020-2028 strategic plan, that actually reinforced First Five L.A.'s ongoing transformation from a funder of direct services to an agent of systems change. So now we're in the chrysalis stage of our organizational transformation. And this means that we're digging into organizational improvements that are necessary for First Five L.A. to be more effective. Guiding our organizational improvements are four critical must-dos that Kim referred to in her opening remarks. The things that we absolutely have to do to strengthen our organization and role and role as an agent of systems change. So our first is around impact. First Five L.A., we must be clear about the outcomes that we're holding ourselves accountable to achieve and the work that we will and won't do to achieve those outcomes. The next is process. We're asking ourselves questions like, do we have to do it that way? Is this the most efficient use of our time? So these kinds of questions are inviting us to concentrate on what's really needed, simplify tasks and avoid process overload. And we definitely have this issue within First Five L.A. and that's why this is a critical must-do for us. Our culture. We know that our culture is critical to how we show up for each other and the work. So this is about how we work, our norms, values, behavior, policies, practices, all the things all the things that demonstrate whether what we do is aligned with what we say we're about. And the fourth is fiscal, that we must fully understand our fiscal reality and act on it as we invest in First 5LA's people, which are a critical resource to advance the work, and then deploy our operational and programmatic resources strategically to maximize impact. Actually, let me just go back, so just to say one other thing here. So on this slide, this is about our language. So we talk about these as four must-dos and internally we call these our four imperatives. And we know the word imperative is not in the plain speak dictionary, but we want commissioners to know the language that we've been using internally. So if you're in a meeting with one of our team members and they say, you know, Commissioner, I've been thinking about that fiscal imperative, you know exactly what it is that they are referring to. Now, organizational improvement means change and change can be unsettling because it's messy. But we embrace Brene Brown's perspective that messy is where the magic happens. So what magic has been happening? Well, we've been looking at ourselves in the mirror, particularly as it relates to how we demonstrate our values internally and externally. The Board has heard about our DEI work in consultation with the C collaborative and we're also working closely with the Center for Collective Wisdom to help us navigate our organizational transformation. We've been working to align our business processes into a more cohesive whole while recognizing that this also means updating policies to be more responsive and flexible. The updated procurement policy approved by the Board in September of last year and modifying the 2022 Board Meeting Calendar are examples of this. We've been challenging ourselves to better focus and prioritize our work, which is leading to our first strategic plan review and refinement cycle. Now, review and refinement cycles are called out in our strategic plan and represent a commitment to periodically reflect on what we're learning through implementation and adjust based on that learning. The first review and refinement cycle will be launched this spring and will conclude board engagement and discussion in the fall. Finally, and certainly not least, we've been challenging ourselves to practice greater fiscal discipline, which is the focus of today's conversation. We'll now hear from Raul, who will walk the Board through our long-term financial planning in the context of our fiscal reality. Raul?
Thank you, Antoinette, and good afternoon, commissioners. I am Raul Ortega, the Director of Finance. Building from Antoinette's comment, to embrace and practice greater fiscal discipline, we must understand our current fiscal reality. And as Kim mentioned in her opening remarks, we are, in our fiscal reality as of today, we are extremely healthy. We are a very strong organization, both physically, fiscally, sorry, and with our people. We are extremely fortunate that we have a dedicated revenue source and a significant fund balance of about $300 million, which makes First 5LA one of the largest investors in early childhood well-being in the nation. And as many of you all know, we have been consistently operating where our annual expenditures have been exceeding our annual revenues. As such, and as an example, the mid-year that we have presented to you last month and that was on the consent calendar for today reflects that our revised budget went to $111 million, while our annual revenue for this fiscal year is still projected at $75 million. As you see, this continuously reflects a dependency on our fund balance. And we must understand that this way of operating is unsustainable. And as steward of public funds, it is our responsibility to plan ahead and to be responsible for owning our fiscal reality. Next slide, please. For us to own our fiscal reality, we must have a mutual understanding. I would like to provide you some history and an overview of our long-term financial plan. In fiscal year 2019-20, the Board approved a plan that moved First 5LA away from a five-year annual projection snapshot to a 10-year plan establishing three guardrails for our long-term financial health and sustainability. We established annual spending caps. We adopted an increase to our required reserve from 25% to 50% of our approved annual budget. And finally, we adopted a simplified budget structure, which established up to a 50% cap on our administrative costs, with the remaining 85% allocated to programs. Of course, this plan reflected our best thinking at the time. And as we look forward to our strategic plan and revision cycle as to what Antoinette spoke to, we will want to explore how to improve our long-term financial plan, not only in three years, but on an annual basis. Continue to look and look and seek opportunities to revise and to revisit some of those guardrails. Let us now unpack our current long-term financial plan. For many of you, this slide looks extremely familiar. This is the slide that we usually represent in order to show what our long-term financial projections are. It is also a move away from the Commission. If you recall, the spreadsheet that we had or the graph that we had in the back of the Commission Conference Room, which has illustrated key trends of our revenue, of our revenue expenditures and our fund balance. We understand that this slide in itself is an extremely busy slide and it's a very difficult slide to follow. So to build on our presentation and to bring you all along, I would like to build a different table to highlight and to illustrate key trends based on our Board-approved long-term financial plan through fiscal year 27-28. And I would like to start with the first row of our ongoing revenue. As you see, we complete, in this first row, we continue to reflect the decline in tobacco tax revenues as consumption use and county birth rate goes down. Between fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 27-28, we are projecting an overall decline of roughly 28.45%. Moving to the next row and building on this table, we want the Board to see that what we're reflecting here is the approved spending cap, which reflects a constant downward trend in expenditures of roughly 37.16%. Between the fiscal year 2021 through fiscal year 27-28, you see an annual decline of roughly 6.4%. And note this trend moves us in the right direction. Our expenditures are yet to be aligned with our revenue in fiscal year 27-28, which you will see as we build upon this slide. On this row, we show the resources needed from our fund balance to fill the gap between expenses and our revenue. You see here for 27-28 that we are still relying on roughly $18.7 million of our fund balance to cover that year's adopted spending cap, which is a significant gap that we need to consider as we look beyond 27-28. And the reason why I highlight this number is because we need to be thinking out beyond 27-28 and see that that is a significant dollar amount as we move forward beyond. On this next row, we see the same information presented as above, but broken down in a percentage. And again, you see that our trend is, it's a good trend to have in that we're showing less reliance on our fund balance. In this row, we focus on our projected actual fund balance or projected fund balance. And again, I want to highlight the trend from fiscal year 2021 through 27-28. We see the downward trend of 68.16%, leaving us with an estimated fund balance of roughly $94.7 million by June of 2028. And if we can just move to the next line, please. And when you consider our 50% reserve that we will be set aside, which was the row required reserve, you end up with an available fund balance for the future year to be $55.8 million by the end of 27-28. Of course, as these projected revenues and expenditures become actual revenues and expenditures throughout the lifespan of our long-term financial plan, we must acknowledge that our fund balance will continue to fluctuate year to year. At this time, I would like to take some time to highlight some of the most important takeaways that I would like for us to leave today. Across the 10 years of our current long-term financial plan, we have estimated needing almost $300 million from our fund balance to fill the gap between our expenditures and ongoing revenues. By fiscal year 27-28, we project our ending fund balance to be roughly $94.7 million. And after setting aside our reserve of 50% of the following budget year, we are projecting roughly $55.8 million in remaining one-time funds to support balancing any proposed gap between revenues and expenditures for the next 10-year long-term financial plan, which averages out to a little bit over $5.5 million a year. And when we are relying on the $18.7 million in the last year of the current long-term financial plan, we need to acknowledge that this is not sustainable. And though we are headed in the right direction, we can't rely on having a significant fund balance to draw on past fiscal year 27-28. So through the end of our current plan, we will need to embrace our fiscal reality and hold ourselves accountable to the guardrails that we have established. And most importantly, as we begin to look beyond fiscal year 27-28, we needed to develop and consider different scenarios and timelines to our long-term approach. In the near term, we have started identifying opportunities to reduce the gap between revenues and expenditures over the remaining years of our current long-term financial plan. These short-term opportunities are the ones that Kim highlighted in her opening remarks. We are intentionally working with partners. And I want to be clear, we are working with our partners to review contracts with cost savings that can be recuperated. So this is in partnership. It's not a sweep. It's again, as collaborating, as thought partners with our contractors to see where there is opportunities to recuperate unused resources. We're also continuously reflecting on what we are doing as an organization. We're continuing to refine our strategies for greater systems change impact and sunsetting work that does not reflect our systems change focus or yield the impact we are wanting to achieve, or what I like to call, what is the return on our investment. And last but not least, we're gradually decreasing our contracts amount over time to align our fiscal realities and to mitigate stark reductions in the outer years. These decrease in in our, these decrease in our contract amounts will also be aligned to the work that we are wanting to prioritize. It's not a reduction just to reduce, but it is to align to the work that we would want to prioritize. So what is next for the fiscal journey or our fiscal journey? In May, we will bring to you, to the Budget Finance and the Executive Committee to review the proposed fiscal year 22-23 budget. And in addition, we will take it to the Board, to the full Board as an information item. The proposed budget will adhere to the spending cap that the Board approved and reflects staff's best thinking for the next fiscal year. And in June, seek Board approval of the proposed fiscal year 22-23 budget. And for now, I will now pass it back to my colleague, Antoinette, to highlight some key takeaways from our presentation. And I'm looking forward to listen and to learn with our open conversation with the entire Board later on this afternoon. Thank you, Antoinette.
Thank you, Raul. So here are the key takeaways from this presentation. The first is that organizational change is necessary and well worth it, even though it can be hard. We have four must-dos guiding our organizational improvements, culture, process, impact and fiscal. Our fiscal must-do is about practicing greater discipline. As Raul noted, we want to do the work that yields the greatest impact and we want to do our very best to avoid stark reductions in the future, which means that we have to make strategic choices today about the work that we will and will not do and plan wisely for the future. Because we know that our current spending, our current spending is not sustainable and we're very committed to aligning our revenues and expenditures. There's work that we still need to do and in consultation with the Budget and Finance Committee that may lead to hard decisions now so that we don't have to make even more challenging decisions in the future. Aligning our strategies to our fiscal reality is not cause for alarm because even if we only spend $59 million beginning in fiscal year 27-28, because that's what we project our revenue to be, First 5LA will still be one of the largest grant makers in Los Angeles County and one of the largest investors in early childhood well-being in the nation. Our final takeaway is that we have to be more focused as an organization. We have to set clear priorities and we must maximize the resources that we have in pursuit of our very bold north star for young children, not just for the young children of today. We really want the children of the future to also benefit from the work that we do today. And this is why our transformation from a funder of direct services to an agent of systems change is so critical and why it is essential that we do the hard work of aligning our expenditures to our revenue. Now, we are eager for Board discussion and commissioners may note that there are specific questions included in the Board materials, but we do not want the Board discussion to be constrained by these questions. So instead, I will now turn it back over to the Chair to facilitate Board discussion.
Thank you very much. Thank you both very much. I think this is a lot to take in, but not the first time that we've been asked to consider these issues. So let's start with anyone who wants to comment or ask a question or both from the Commissioners. Who has their hand up?
I currently don't see any hands up.
Okay, well, let me start because I know people will be sort of cogitating on this. Back in the time before we went to a systems approach, we were funding at First 5LA a hodgepodge of programs, direct services. A lot of it related to the fact that every year we had a different chair because the Chair of the Board would rotate in as the Chair of the Board of Suits would rotate in as the Chair of the Board of First 5. And there seemed to be plenty of money. And so we kind of added on very good programs in, you know, a lot of different areas, not necessarily as coordinated as they might be. Don Kenabi, who preceded Janice Hahn in the 4th District, kind of saw the handwriting on the wall in terms of this kind of fiscal reality and decided that one of the approaches that would be difficult but necessary was to stop being a direct funder and think more about being the kind of foundation that works on systemic change and aiming at things that way. So in many ways, we do and we do not follow that model. So in many ways, we do and we do not follow that model. But it has been a necessary change and a painful one. None of us, I don't think, was on the board when this happened, maybe. Don't know, maybe one or two were. But as you can imagine, there was a lot of outcry from those who felt they would be losing something. And that is going to be the same thing that happens to us here. So the process is important, but so is decisive work on this. So I guess one of the things that I might ask Kim is do we need a separate ad hoc committee of the board to look at the long term possibilities and options? Or is that something that fits in the current fiscal committee, which is, as we heard, is going to be looking at the next year's budget and always will be looking at the next year's budget? Or is it purely a staff function? So that, don't answer yet, but that is my first question. The second question is whether it was, as I think was suggested, a better strategy to begin to diminish our budget year over year over year right now. So that it is not a wrenching overspending, 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 and then we're just gonna cut a lot of stuff down the line. So those are my two questions for now before I go to other commissioners.
Sheila, for those questions, let me, let me take a crack and invite my colleagues to chime in as well. You know, I, I, I think my, my recommendation to the board is that we work within our current board structure, though recognizing that issues of this nature that are fundamentally fiscal and strategic reside within the providence of the board as a whole. So, you know, I, I, I think my recommendation to the board would be that we work with budget and finance. And depending upon the, the issues, we, we might want to convene like a joint committee meeting with the executive team before, executive committee before coming back to the full board. But, but I, I, I think we have the, the structures in place to to enable the staff to do its work and engage the board around some different scenarios and considerations and implications before returning to the full board. So let me, let me.
Well, I think, I, I, I think it's a necessary thing for the committee as well.
Yep.
Because it's always been very chaotic to essentially, for, I, I think you know very well, to go to a, and you've never done it, to go to a committee or a subcommittee and say, well, do you guys have any ideas? You know, I mean, that is very difficult for the members of the committee and everyone else. I think there needs to be some real thinking about what, where this diminution in the budget could logically occur and whether that would occur potentially by spin off or by allowing attrition or, you know, the, the hard things without. Sir, we're not presented with a blank slate, especially on a committee, which is only a, you know, a portion of the board for this discussion, so it can be kind of realistic.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, I think that's right. The, the starting point, regardless of governance structure, the starting point is me and my colleagues, we need to do the critical thinking and the staff work looking carefully at where we are and the different pathways forward to more tightly aligned revenues and expenditures while maintaining a responsible reserve. So I, I would want us to be able to undertake kind of scenario, some scenario planning and kick the tires of that internally before bringing some initial good thinking to budget and finance. And, you know, again, I, I, I'm, I'm, would be eager to get feedback too and, you know, counsel from the committee. And we would use that in turn then to inform a refined product that would go to the full board. But it's, it's on us. This is not something where we're saying to the board, let's whiteboard the organization and do it in committee session. And, and so Sheila, I think that also relates to your, this ties to your comment or quest, your second question about different approaches we might take. And the importance of, I'm hearing you say underscore the importance of us taking action sooner rather than later because of the multi-year benefits that accrue as opposed to waiting towards, you know, twenty seven, twenty eight, et cetera, when there would be a very sharp cliff, which would be very disruptive to the community and to our partners, et cetera. So that, that, that is, as Raul noted, there are a number of things we already have underway in the context of developing this current year, the, the next budget year budget, which will be bringing to the board in the spring, that reflect that longer term outlook. So making some changes in what we are going to recommend to the board in the budget year, which will help accelerate some of the funding adjustments that we know are going to need to occur over time. But the, you know, kind of the big decisions about our longer term more heavily resourced investments, that, that's going to require a little bit of time on our part in terms of doing the staff work and the critical thinking and working with the committee and the board in terms of how we approach that. But we're not waiting for the future. The, the board will see some very concrete steps in the budget year, which will have multi-year.
Yeah, I think the difficulty is word starts to leak out about those things that you're thinking of changing. And people will start to hear, not us, not us, not us, don't do it, you know, to us, don't do this. Now, there may be a, a, you know, a good sort of idea about steps and what can be undertaken. And sometimes with preparation, we find, you know, it's, it's necessary that some programs begin to help support themselves or even some approaches. But I think it's, it's good to always stamp everything draft, you know, do not share. Because otherwise, there, there's unnecessary angst, I think, about what's going to happen with some of this funding. So obviously, much more to be said, but Ramalas, you're next.
I, I'm, I'm in agreement with both of you. First of all, I think Kim and her team needs to really look at this and determine what is going to be the effort going forward. Some examples are like the, the birth rate is dropping. So, and then we've done, you've done, her and her team have done a great job in getting the state and the county and other departments to step up with regards to home visitation and other things. And yet we still have pilots we're trying to do to have proof of concept. So it's a different, it's a tough balance. And that's why I think it's Kim's point about what she needs to do to determine the balance on that. And the strategy to do that is going to be important because we, we have to also let our partners know that we are transitioning and that, yes, it's going to be based on these kinds of strategies. But you still have to say, what is your impact and what are we going to do as a part of proof of concept to impact systems? You know, especially with D E I issues. So, you know, it's, it's that kind of thing along with service provision. And the children have suffered so much in the loss of their educational development as a part of this pandemic. So, you know, that might require us to do some other piloting and collaborate in a different level to help schools and everyone, especially early education system, do something to help those kids recoup some of that loss that they've already had. But I, I totally agree. I think I want to first commend from the time we said changes needed to be made and the changes the board made in the, what we're doing with our finances. I want to commend Kim, her team, Raul and Antoinette and everyone, John and everyone in her team for getting us to where we are. We are looking better financially. And they are making changes and they are cutting some things back. But I think the strategic planning that Kim talks about is what really needed before even the budget and finance can comment on it or anyone. And I think when we get to that, I think what Supervisor Crew talks about, of having the whole board come forward and say what they think is going to be very pivotal on the final decision. But I think we have to give Kim and her team the opportunity to say, what are we going to do? What can go, what can't go and what aligns with the strategic plan before we, any of us get into that involvement, just my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that also includes both the feds and the state have begun to think a good deal more about putting some money into early childhood, one way or another, or another, or another. And one of the things that I think a foundation does and can do, and indeed we have and will, is to be the redistributor in some ways of some of that money where we can access and then distribute in ways that possibly could help us blunt the edge of having to diminish our own expenditures, you know, somewhat drastically. And that, I think, would be an aspect of exploration by the staff and administration as well. Anyone else with their hand up?
I, I'll say a couple of things. This is Judy.
Okay.
I, I think that the the example of home visiting is a good one to look at how, how we have managed and how the the county has managed to understand the importance of that and the importance of sharing. And, and eventually, I'm assuming we won't be doing the direct service kind of stuff, but the county will be. And there, and I, I don't mean just with the county, but there as the federal government and state government begins to understand there are very young children, there are going to be other things that we do that they're going to be able to partner with us or in fact, over time, take over. So I, I think we should be looking for those opportunities. I, I'm, even in my own experience with my school district, now they understand that there are very young children in the district in the preschools. What a surprise. It used to be that when I was working there that nobody thought about it except me and I had to keep banging people's heads to understand that. But now it's, it's kind of base, a basic thing that from birth, young children need to be, have attention paid to them. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. I, I heard that pause. Linda, I don't see any texts from you. Judy, anyone else with their hands up? Or anyone else wishing to say anything at this point? Obviously, this is going to come back to us and come back to us and come back to us.
I, I see nobody's hands up.
Can I say something? I like what Sheila is also saying. We need to look at, we're strategically as a, as system change people. We have an opportunity, but I also see opportunity for the board to collaborate with Kim and her team to go to the state and say, let us be the pass through in L A County for some of these things that are strategic. And they might say yes to that so that we could be that pass through. I think that was a great recommendation. But I think it's going to also require board support, board of supervisor support of us to do that as well.
Kim, has the statewide organization thought about this because obviously there's a diminution in tobacco funds for everybody?
You know, the state really hasn't. You know, there, there's a state first five commission and then there's the fifty eight county commissions. And we're all in very similar situations in terms of declining revenues. And for some of the first fives, it, it, the smaller ones, it candidly is existential. A number of the county commissions have actually merged to bring more of like a, a regional approach. So there's a number of strategies that are being employed. Beyond the fiscal challenges, though, more and more of the first fives understand systems change is really the, the high leverage, high impact approach. It also has the value of being less expensive than direct services, frankly. So, you know, I, I think of sustainability of first fives and sustainability of services and supports and systems that support families and children is a very important priority for the association of first fives. And they're actually going through a recruitment right now for a new executive director. And this is a very important priority for them. I, I would note, maybe Sharna has an example or two. Commissioners might be interested that there have been examples of where the first fives have advocated in the state legislature to be authorized to accept new monies related to family strengthening, home visiting, for example. So this idea of a pass through an intermediary organization, I'm kind of, that's what I'm hearing board members speak to and they're, they're related but different. But the point is, the, the larger strategic question is, is there a role for first fives to play in terms of contributing to the systems changes at the county level that the state seeks? So Sharon, is there an example of how we, we've successfully advocated as first fives to be able to play kind of that intermediary or, or re-granting entity?
Yes, I would say, well, I, I think the families' first involvement that we've had about helping counties set priorities and be at the table as second pair of last resort or help with counties that may or may not prioritize early childhood investments. We definitely have been playing that role, but we've also advocated as an association to increase our revenue with the vaping tax and e-cigarettes. And we've been at the table in cannabis tax conversations to try to find alternative revenue as well. This is something the association is taking the lead on in our membership and are definitely trying to explore more of a policy agenda to refine what that role as a pass through might be. Because so far, it's been inconsistent for counties that have been able to take advantage of it. But that's top of the policy committee's agenda this year to refine as well.
Well, it's interesting. I think there might be more trust actually in the legislature for first fives in those counties because we're independent. Rather than giving more money to county, sometimes they are just going to say from experience on both sides reluctant to do. So we might be well placed to get some of that early childhood money out in a different way. Not in competition with the county, which is why I, I think we have involvement from the county in this commission, but, you know, in collaboration. So I think everybody is aware. It's, it's a way to enhance what's available to contribute, that's for sure. It's not just our share, you know, of the tobacco tax and our, you know, reserve funds. So anybody else?
I just want to jump in here before we get off of this topic. The power of what first five here in L A have done in order to create proof of concept on home visitation is very powerful. And that's a strength that we got to bring to the state that says, hey, we, not only are we funding these things, but more to model concept change and how these things are done. And, and we have successfully, when I say we, the team and everyone has done very successfully proven this. And so when we make that argument, not argument, but. but that request and advocacy, let's talk about that as a part of that. Because not only do we do systems change, we also model concepts of systems change that the, that other governmental organizations, even in the county, can't do, won't do until after we have done it and show them that it works. Because changing that system to do something different, you have to prove it works first. And that's what you've done here in First Five LA. Before home visitation became a change at the local and state level. Just a thought.
We have John Wagner with his hand up now.
Yes, let me just talk a little bit, John, before I get to you about the home visitation. In, you know, that model was one that was developed, of course, not by us. And there were quite a few different programs that the county tried to bring together to talk about how there could be collaboration. But they had already begun to meet as a group. And I think that's also an aspect of the approach. Because they each, though they didn't have a lot of resources, each brought different ideas about resources too. So, John, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think home visiting is a really great example where there's multiple level levers that we can be pulling with the state. And so, as you just mentioned, Sheila, the additional funding through the CalWorks program is an example where we did test a proof of concept here in Los Angeles County and we were able to use and advocate based on that experience in Sacramento. Similarly, our Government Affairs and Public Policy Team has kept a really close eye on state health efforts coming out of Sacramento on the reproachment of some of the managed care contracts. So we are working across multiple streams to make sure that we will be in a position to ensure that health plans are, we're, we're able to engage health plans on the benefits of home visiting and how these investments by First Five LA, in this case, are actually serving populations. And for the first time, we are receiving funding from a managed care plan reimbursing us for welcome babies. So I think it's an example where we're working on some of those administrative requirements like reproachment of health plans as well as proof of concept and making sure we're trying to partner to ensure that it's not just our dollars, but that others are picking up where we've historically invested. Are all really important pieces to solving this, this issue about our fiscal reality going forward.
Yeah, I think we should also, however, not think that this would be any kind of a magic bullet instead of the staff recommending to us where cuts need to be made or changes need to be made so that we have a steady lessening in our expenditures. So we will engage in strategic thinking, but not magical thinking. So I think, I think the staff has been very good at that. But I don't want the commission and commissioners to think that this is gonna solve our problem. I think we are, despite anything we do, going to have to take a hard bite, as we did years ago when we changed to a systems approach, to, you know, bring all of these needs and abilities into alignment. Okay, anybody else?
This is Judy. I have one more thing. And that is that the transition of kindergarten and TK, transitional kindergarten, is going to have a huge effect over time on what happens in early childhood programs from birth to five. And I think we just need to follow what's happening and see where we can be helpful, not necessarily with money, because there's going to be money for these programs, but in how to make these programs more effective for, for young children.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry. Go ahead. There's one more thing. We are modeling Help Me Grow and the early assessment of these children so that they will have a chance to connect to resources and services they need at an early age so they have the trajectory to be successful. We're just starting on that. And that's a very important piece that we cannot lose. And we have to, and what I see based on what we've done with home visitation, we have to create this model, capture the data and prove it works so that we can help the state and others see how this should be done and how it can be integrated into the existing system through allowing it to be charged at, for most of the people of need with, with Medi-Cal, Medicare and other health systems so that those, all those children, all children can succeed in life. But, but I, but we're gonna have to model that with our collaborative partners, like you're doing now. This is a very important piece. And the same thing on the early assessment in schools that we're modeling and concept. So these are models that we're, we're setting up to prove to the state and other systems that this is how it should be done and this is the most effective way to help the children and families. And so we gotta balance that off to what we're trying to do against what we're taking away. So I'm just saying, I know Kim and her team are gonna do a great job in figuring that out. But the idea is that we have to do that. And yes, we gonna have to, like the supervisor said, there are some things that go away, but I'm gonna leave that to Kim and the team to decide what's gonna have to go and what has to stay.
And I, and I, and I think if I may, Sheila, just on that point, I think part of the work that you're speaking to, Ramalas, that the team needs to do and come back to the board on is being clear amongst ourselves and with the board around, you know, what are the conditions and circumstances that lead us to conclude a proof-of-concept approach is the most strategic use of our staff, talent and financial resources? And are there alternative, alternatives to the proof-of-concept approach that may be more aligned with opportunities presented by an evolving environment? Proof-of-concept, if we're using that as a shorthand for investing in more programmatic activity, certainly with home visiting is a good example of investing in services and doing so in a way to really inform and drive policy and systems change. I think we have a terrific model there. It's also a very costly model, as we know. So that's part of our job that we need to do in thinking through on our own and then with you. You know, when is proof-of-concept the most strategic choice with the highest return on investment of resources? And when might there, the environment and our own fiscal context and strategic thinking lead us to say, "There's actually some alternative approaches we now need to be considering." So that's, that's the work to be done. It's, it's hard work, but, you know, I, I, I think we're, we're up to it. I know we're up to it.
Okay, Carol.
Carol, you're on mute still.
I just wanted to thank you all for talking about that TK because it's a critical place. We need to put our energies toward. And again, is it proof, proof of, are we doing really the idea of reaching out to other services and coordinating them? Or are we gonna do something like the home business, which have been so successful? So it's something we can't take off our plate entirely and it's someplace that we need to put our energies because we need to help families to do a better job, the schools and to integrate all these services. And I think that's a role we need to play. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I think that we have had a good and robust discussion. I hope that it's been helpful to the staff because we're really tossing the ball back to them. And I look forward to the next time this comes to us, which I assume will be fairly soon. And I don't see anything else on the agenda. Is there anything anyone wants to add before we get to general public comment? Any, any commissioner want to inform us of anything or ask questions? Okay, Linda, do we have any requests for general public comment?
We do not have any requests for general public comments.
All right, then, without objection, I will declare that this meeting has not only been informative and wonderful, but is now adjourned.